Whenever you're.
I'm gonna stand.
You can, you might as well. All right, let's call the meeting door. Please rise.
To the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Renee, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Canfield.
Here.
Commissioner Orthline. Vice Mayor Stanley.
Here.
Mayor Morgan.
Here.
Also President participating today is Town Manager Greg Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney Toreng Zorro, Chief Jones, CFO Mark Bymaster, and myself.
Thank you very much. We've been presented with our minutes from the June fourteen meeting. Are there any comments, additions, corrections, or motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting?
Second.
Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Any changes, additions to the agenda? I don't believe so. Thank you. All right, all right. Excuse me. Next meeting is August ninth at nine AM. At September thirteen will be a four o'clock meeting, by the way, because we have our tentative budget adoption meeting at five oh one PM on that date. There'll be a tentative budget meeting September thirteen, five oh one, and our final budget meeting will be Tuesday, September twenty fourth at five oh one for anyone who wishes to attend. Public comment? Anyone wish to speak? This is like the old days. All right, Town Manager. Let's go to the CIP.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have a representative from the, from the contractor that's here today. And I'm sorry, I can't remember. Your name? George and Tom, okay. And they can give you an update, but what I can tell you is that they cannot be doing any work at this point in time because they are, we are, they are waiting to get a de-watering permit from South Florida Water Management District. They did have a de-watering permit that they were able to use during the work that they have completed, but that was de-watering to the, to a pond on the Little Club Golf Course. And the Little Club Golf Course said that they would not like for them to do that anymore. And, and so they need to get a de-watering permit that allows them to put the water into the intercoastal waterway. I think they were aware of that when the project started. They can correct me if I'm wrong. I was, we had a meeting yesterday with our engineers and the contractors. I was in part of it, also working on the budget with Mr. Bymaster. Anthony is here and can fill in any holes that I might have as to how that meeting went yesterday. But I'll, I'll let the contractors say words to you, and you can ask them any questions. If I'm not mistaken, and Anthony, why don't you get up there? During the meeting, there, there was some discussion about perhaps some work that could be done at other locations in town where we didn't expect any de-watering issues. One of them is actually Bermuda over here, but I think you have an issue with that.
Well, no, the issue is that even the representative from a little way agreed with me that even at that elevation, there's still, because of the sea level, there may be some water there, but they did some test holes and they didn't find any water from when they did their test. I was on vacation last week, so I don't know what happened, so.
Was there water or was there not on the test holes?
I need you to go to the microphone, please.
Come on up. Good morning. Yes, we did find water about four feet down from.
Can we get your name?
Oh, sorry, Thomas Weeks, Roadway Construction. We did do a couple of potholes. We did find water about four feet down from the existing ground. That was at roughly around high tide. So our trench typically is down to about four feet. In previous areas where we did find water, we do have to pump it out. Per this, per the plans, it says that they have to have a dry hole, dry trench, in order for us to lay down our material. So we do have to pump. Unfortunately, over here, we have no new infrastructure, new drainage to pump into. So therefore, we can't pump out into the swales, which will go into the existing drainage. We can go out to the intercoastal. So we had to apply for a de-watering permit from South Florida Water Management. Right now, the plan has, the plan, the water plan has been completed. We sent it over to the CEI for their review and their blessing, and then it'll be submitted to South Florida. We're anticipating it takes about three to four weeks for approval.
Why didn't you get it before you started?
Because initially, we anticipated being able to pump out into the swales. You know, in other practices, we've been able to install certain aspects of, of the project in the wet. Unfortunately, here we can't, so we did anticipate doing it that way previously.
Is there a way to pump it into a tanker or something and then move it to where you need to dis- disperse it? I mean, to lose a month seems, seems like there might be some other solutions other than just waiting.
Well, even if we pump it into a tank, it's still considered de-water and still requires us to pull a permit. And then that water would have to be displaced out from the tank into the existing drainage system, which goes out to the intercoastal.
And I'd like to follow up on Mr. Green's question. I remember that you and I discussed that once before, and so I don't completely understand. So you, you have a tanker that, that you put the water in. But anywhere you take that water then requires a de-watering permit, wherever that might be.
Right.
Can you sub that out to a company that has the permit and brings the truck?
Well, you, they would still need to pull a permit.
Well, they'll have the permit. They're a sub.
Right, but they still have, it still will take them.
So the job they have to get it.
Right.
There aren't companies that have.
Because they're gonna ask you, where is that water coming from?
How long's it been since you've quit working, and how much longer do you have?
It's been, what?
About two weeks now.
Two weeks? So about two more weeks you'll have the permit?
No. No, about three.
I think it's absolutely outrageous that you guys didn't pull this permit before you started this job. We moved the project down to Old School because we wanted to get the water out. We knew there was gonna be water. You found it on day one. Day one, you found the water. That's why we were trying to get this job done before the storm season in the wet area. I don't understand, and I'm not persuaded by what you said, that there was no reason for you not to pull a permit that would allow you to discharge either into tanks or into the intercoastal, to rely on a country club to dump all this water seems, I'm not gonna use the word negligent, but certainly ill-advised. But we're in a situation now where you just stopped work, right? I mean, nothing you can do. Is that what you're telling us?
Well, I mean, we do, there's a couple areas. There's about two sticks of pipe on Wright to be completed. And then there's a drainage box, probably a couple sticks of pipe on Old School, that we looked at yesterday where we could possibly pump into the new drainage system, which doesn't go out to an intercoastal. That'll be able to hold the water. We install that, then we can work on the reconstruction of the road. Now, if we do that, there's still issues with shallow utilities that we're still waiting on an answer from the CEI on how to proceed. We provided different options. Unfortunately, they haven't approved our price proposal yet for that, but that is an option that we're looking at trying to do work while we wait for the de-watering permit.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's some of the work that we were talking about. Remember going block by block and addressing those issues as, as we get to them, so.
One other, so one other question, because you seem to indicate we have the ability to pump into existing access into, into the intercoastal in certain areas. There's no pumping system and, and, you know, soft piping that we can run to go from A to B? Right, because you, you said if there was, there was drainage areas that existed today to the intercoastal, we could just do it. Where's the closest place where we could actually run something and pump water through that? Is that?
I don't think that's what you were.
No, no, no. So, I mean.
Referring, I think, to existing underground.
Right, we can, we, we've obviously installed some drainage already in the project. The plan is to, to be able to pump into that existing system, which is, is not connected yet to the intercoastal. By doing that, we don't have to worry about turbidity going out, multiple testing. Our new drainage gets cleaned before it gets turned over to you guys anyway. So we have to clean out all the boxes, all the pipe. That has to be verified by, obviously, the CEI. So that's why our intent would be to pump into that system, the existing system, which is not yet connected to the intercoastal. That's how we can try to continue working on Wright and on Old School while we get the de-watering permit.
No, yeah, it doesn't. Oh, okay. So if we've got to have a, so if we may or may not be able to pump into the existing system, is the de-watering permit we're getting for Old School for that location to pump out with the turbidity barrier and the testing, is that?
It's for the entire project.
Is it gonna be for the entire project?
For the duration.
Because I wanna make sure we don't need three other permits as we all move down the, down the way.
For the entire project, for the entire duration.
Do we have any confirmation from the engineer on that?
As far as.
I don't know.
The, the one de-watering program that they need the permit for, the program that they're trying to put together. I was trying to read most of it last night, so.
So they got, so for a de-wa, I mean, we're at four feet on Bermuda.
Yeah.
Bermuda's like twenty feet above the roof of my house, and we're at four feet. You can look down up there and look at the roof of my house and some of Gulfstream.
And there's still water there, Mr. Stanley.
Yeah, so are we, so we're gonna run like a soft pipe? Let's say we're de-watering on Gulfview. So are we gonna run a soft pipe all the way down, what Commissioner Green said, to this location down here?
Well, there, there's existing drainage that's out there, so we just pump into the closest existing drainage, and where that goes out to whatever.
That's where the turbidity barrier is.
That's where, well, there'd be turbidity barrier on every outfall, at every finger.
Yeah.
That's what the de-watering permit will, will show. A, we have, you know, X amount of outfalls, six, seven outfalls.
Yeah.
The turbidity there, testing twice a day at those locations, and to verify that the turbidity's under the required twenty-nine N T U.
Yeah, so those will all be included in, in the de-water.
Yeah, then if our testing's high.
We have to stop.
Then we have to stop. So we kind of factor that in. Okay.
And they're supposed to do testing.
Yeah.
Twice a day?
Oh, yeah, we're used to, we're used to South Florida water appearing, sure. We had that on another project.
Okay. So where are we going from here?
Yeah, so where, so where we're at right now is you, you've got to this, this proposal to Baxter Woodman on, on these, these pipes that you wanna finish up?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we discussed that in the progress meeting yesterday. I followed up with an email last night to Richard. So I'm just waiting on his, his response.
And you're going to go ahead with the shallow lines or whatever?
So, so the issue we're having, at least on Wright and Old School, is that there's a lot of existing utilities that fall within the pavement design of our subgrade. The plans call for us to reclaim that material, but if we reclaim it, falls within the utilities, utilities will get damaged. We've already sent out notifications to those utilities. We did our due diligence. We called locates. We exposed them. We got the mentions on distances from the top of the ground. All those things fall within the pavement design that wasn't shown, that isn't identified, that there will be conflicts. So what we proposed was to eliminate the reclaiming and add more line down. That'll allow us to go to the top of that existing utility and not have to damage it or go around it. So that proposal was sent over to Baxter, and.
And that's what.
And that's the one that they're trying to see if we can possibly do on a street-by-street basis. Obviously, we've only encountered this on two streets that we've started working on. Hopefully, other areas do not have it, and we don't have to go that route, but that's one of the things that we can possibly do while we wait for the de-watering permit.
And that's what you and I were discussing with them, this.
I think they should do that. Mr. Zorro, the, the agreement that we have with this contractor does require them to obtain all necessary permits to complete the project?
Yes, it would be their responsibility, and that's covered in our regular progress meetings.
Okay. One more question. Yes, sure, of course. I mean, just try not to lose three weeks here. Can you dig the trenches at three feet? And so when you, once you get the permit, you go down the next foot, you get the water and you pump it out so that, I presume that's faster than starting at four feet. I could be wrong. I don't know how the equipment works, but.
It doesn't, I don't think it would benefit anything. I think it would just make the residents more mad.
The specifications on the plan, the design plan, is three, three feet and a half from the base of the pipe to the top of the pipe. It has to be three feet, but they have to go below the three and a half to put a half a foot of bedding, which is the rock, and it has to be dry when they get ready to do it, to put the pipe on top of it. So that way, there's no other conflicts and surrounding the pipe itself. So plan, design calls for three and a half feet from the bottom of the pipe, three feet to the top of the pipe. So even if they were to try to dig it, as soon as they hit two and a half feet, maybe even two feet in the core area, they're already in water. So they can't do anything. They're at a standstill. They're, they're taking out slop is what they're taking out. So.
So what we'll do is follow up with Baxter Woodman.
Yeah, so Baxter Woodman will determine what sort of work with the contractor they can do over the next three to four weeks.
And Baxter Woodman understands the, the importance of this issue.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome. Ad hoc committee report.
We'll go ahead and handle, handle that. Thank you, Mayor. So the ad hoc committee had its fifth meeting on June twenty first. The committee continued to discuss a number of potential code changes and identified an area of the core that would be appropriate for an overlay district, which are the lots east of Polo Drive and west of Gulfstream Road between Old School on the north and Gulfview on the south. There was continued discussion about potential incentives to encourage single-story homes and changes to the code that would either discourage two-story homes or impact mass and concerns, such as reducing the percentage of square footage allowed on the second floor. With a number of the committee members out of town this summer, they are taking a little bit of a hiatus for this month and August, and will return to regular meetings in September, continuing to make good progress. So that's my report.
All right, very good. ARPP meeting, that meeting will be Tuesday, July thirtieth. That date has changed. Normally, it's a Thursday, but it will be Tuesday, July thirty, at eight thirty AM for anyone who wishes to attend. There is no August meeting. A finance report, Mr. Dunham?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's nothing unusual to report in this June. Finance report, this, that represents, I guess, we're, it's nine months, so this is sixty-six percent of our budget.
Okay, and we'll be moving into the budget shortly. Chief Jones?
Mayor, Commissioners, I would ask that you accept the report that I've submitted as drafted. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them regarding the report. In addition to that, I would just like to make the commission and the residents that are present aware that for the first time ever, the Gulfstream Police Department is hosting a training class at the Gulfstream School, where we will have present government agencies, law enforcement locally and federally, and we're hosting a training environment there on July sixteenth. We'll generate no noise or anything like that. It's all indoor, but it's something that we want to be able to do to get the partnership of all those other agencies on board and show that we're obviously part of, of the county and, and part of the problems that we're all dealing with in the community regarding ghost guns and fully automatic weapons and those kind of things that are obviously impacting all of us in law enforcement. So that will be from six PM until eight PM on the sixteenth, and we're looking forward to hosting that. So far, I think we have about forty attendees.
That's great. Sounds good.
If you make too much noise, we'll call the police.
Yes. Good luck.
Okay, let's move over to the budget now. Mr. Dunham, let's start with.
Okay.
Your proposals.
So the first thing that I would like to do, if you have your packet there, is start with acknowledgements. I would like to properly designate Mr. Mark Bymaster. He's not simply an accountant. He, in addition to his role as the town's CFO, is the audit manager and CPA with Nolan Holton Minor. So we're lucky to have him working as the town CFO. So I just wanted to make that clear, and we'll change that with the final printing of this. So. Okay, so you have your, your packet. This is very much like the previous seven budgets that I presented to the town. You remember, there are certain things that I statutorily have to read into the record, and so it's, it gets, probably gets boring to you, but we do this, need to do this every year. So the plan here is to go through the, the summary, and I will say this from the outset. This, this is really a, a normal Gulfstream budget that I say normal would be perhaps anywhere between six to eight million dollars as a total budget, with the exception of the elephant in the room, and that is the CIP program. So, so we're gonna go through the, my, my two-page summary, and then we're going to spend some time showing, showing you in the budget itself where the twelve million dollars that is also part of this budget and related to the CIP, where that's located in, in the budget. Now, some of you may have already identified that, but that's kind of the, the plan here, so. I'll go ahead and read what I need to read. This document is the proposed fiscal plan for the operation of the town of Gulfstream during the next fiscal period. The budget is presented to the town commission in a format that substantially conforms to the standards of public financial presentations known as generally accepted accounting principles promulgated by the National Council of Government Accounting. It is intended that this presentation for review of the budget by the town commission clearly presents the operations of the town and the use of tax dollars and other revenues. The annual operating budget is a basic financial, or I'm sorry, fiscal document, and once adopted, will become the fiscal work program for our community and provide the basis for carrying out the town commission's decisions on policies and programs for the improvement, growth, and orderly maintenance of the town of Gulfstream. So skipping down to, which I like to put in here for your information, and our notes for the general fund and water fund, starting with a list going back to two thousand and fourteen, our fund balance, ending fund balances, going back to fourteen, as you can see, we have annually increased our fund balances, and that was, that was a definitely something that the town commission made an effort to do. I believe it actually got down to about five hundred thousand dollars a few years before this. I've not included that in this list, but those were times that we'd like to try to forget, and so we have made it a point to build up the fund balance, all with this CIP program in, in the back of our minds as a, a way to, to help fund the work that we're doing right now. So, so I'll say, you'll see at the end of twenty-two, our fund balance was eight million, six hundred thousand dollars, and Mark, we're anticipating that by, at the end of the twenty-three.
Yeah, it's, it's anticipated both for twenty-three and twenty-four, they increase two million each year.
Each year, so.
So it's between, between two to two point five per year. So as of nine thirty, twenty twenty-four, it should increase anywhere between four and five million.
So we're, we're continuing to, you know, our property values are continuing to increase, and so we're in a very good financial condition with.
Let me say, that, that's excluding the, the cost of the CIP project that would bring it down.
Well, sure, I mean, but, but the point is, we're trying to show you that we're still very financially, you know, stable and, and good shape. So I do have to read some of these numbers down here statutorily, so I'll begin with the existing millage rate of twenty, or twenty-four budget is three point six seven two four. The proposed millage rate that the staff is recommending is three point six seven two four, again, the same rate that we've had actually the past two years. And then the twenty twenty-five rollback rate is three point four six four six for several years, and during the budget, the town did go back to the rollback rate, but as I say, the past three years, if, if we do that this year, I will be at the same millage rate, and if we do that. So at our existing tax rate, the adhorum proceeds will be six million, seven, seventy-six thousand dollars. And so therefore, the rollback rate, again, at three point four six four six for operations, would be approximately six point seven, six million, seventy-six thousand dollars. That's what the rollback rate is. It, it produces the same amount of general fund revenues as you had the year before. The, and then so the, at the six seven, a seven, three point six seven two four millage rate, we anticipate that would produce approximately six point five million dollars in adhorum tax revenue. The final gross taxable value for Gulfstream in twenty-three was one billion, six hundred and fifty-four thousand. I'm sorry, one billion, six hundred and fifty-four million, and then the estimated taxable value for Gulfstream at the end of twenty-four is one billion, seven hundred and sixty-three million. So you can see that rose by about a hundred and ten million dollars. Moving on, just to identify a few. So you can see that rose by about $110 million. Moving on, just to identify a few items that are in the budget. We don't have any large items in Public Works, but we do have small equipment that we need to replace in the amount of around $10,000. It could be a little more than that, depending on how long some of that equipment lasts. We do have $40,000 in here to repair the seawall at the Bird Sanctuary. As you know, we own, we own that seawall and halfway out into the waterway on the south side of the, of the Bird Sanctuary, but the seawall is in bad shape. I mean, can you perhaps address that?
Good morning, once again. The seawall at the Bird Sanctuary has seams that are starting to leak and starting to push out into the intercoastal. I reached out to a young lady that does work in town. She's kind of like a one-off case type of person. She came out and gave us an estimate around $16,000, $17,000 to do the repairs to it. But from looking at how everything is happening with the seawall and from experience of, you know, doing restoration to seawalls itself, it's a minor repair what she wants to do. It's not going to be something that's permanently fixing it, and it'll still come back again. So we'll have to eventually spend that same amount of money or even more to do the repairs to it again, because they'll have to remove all the old concrete that they're going to put on the wall. So I suggested to Mr. Gregg that we find someone that's going to be able to assist us to correct the seams with inside of the property itself and not from the outside, because that's how she wants to fix it. From my experience, if you repair what's in the inside, it helps slow down the decaying, you know, riprap that's in between the walls and the seams that allow it to stay longer, being supported and having a barrier separating it from the actual inner inland side than from in the water. So.
We just want to make it right.
Right. And my suggestion is to do it right if we're going to do it right, to do it the first time, instead of trying to patch it up, you know, individually every year or something. So, because it won't last long. The repairs that'll be done to it will probably last maybe two or three years, and then we'll have to repeat again, so.
Yeah, we've talked about this before. The seawall's in terrible shape. I doubt there's any disagreement on this, that we should budget for an appropriate repair of that seawall.
Did you have a question?
Yes. How many feet is the seawall?
There's, there was a total of 116 seams. Every seam separation, I think it's eight feet. So we're talking almost 9,000 linear feet all the way around the property, I think.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
So you can repair this for 40,000?
Well, it's, it's every individual seam. So that's what she counted, but the way she wants to repair it is, is what they call a hydro patch repair, which is hot mixed. When you put it in the water, it gets hot and it activates it, and you can seal it in the water, but it doesn't last long. It just starts decaying. It's saltwater will cause it to start breaking apart again.
She actually recently repaired Mr. Martin's seawall down there at the end of Hidden Harbor. And that's how she repaired his, but isn't our seawall bigger than his?
It's a longer seawall, and it also has wider joints to the seawall. They're not so close together.
It's not a replacement, you are doing a repair.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes. I mean, we don't, we're not to the, we're not to the extent where we have to repair the wall, because there's, there's not indications of the rebar showing any decaying, and we usually see it coming through the concrete, because it didn't lay deep enough. We're not having any of those issues, and there's not any.
Yeah, doing replacements.
But we want to get in front of it.
Right, right.
This is a good budget year to do.
I think we're all in agreement to budget appropriately.
Okay. As you can see, two police cruisers and equipment. We had, I put in here ballistic vests for the police. I think this is, this is something new.
So the ballistic vest, we may actually be able to cover with a new grant that was just released, but we're budgeting the money because it has to be expended at the town level in order to get the reimbursement back. So one way or another, we have to budget it, even though it's really the money that we're going to spend on it, at least 50% of those funds are going to come back to the town anyways.
I thought we just replaced vests a few years ago.
It's every five years, every officer's vest has to be replaced. And as we hire new officers, we have to buy new vests as well. So it's constantly just rotating.
And I think we bought some of those vests with money from the, from the Civic Association. Right. And then I'll actually ask the chief to speak to Axon and Evidence, data storage for video evidence, continuing training for Taser devices.
Correct. So last year, we budgeted for the implementation of a new body worn camera program, which also included the Taser 7 weapon to go along with the camera, because they communicate with each other and they function together. The data that is generated by those devices and the video that is recorded by those devices have to be stored in a platform that is meeting the requirements of evidentiary storage. Evidence.com is that tool that is a well-known tool across the nation, and that's what those cameras and those devices use to communicate with and store that data. So what we have, what we did in essence by implementing the program is, instead of having all of the upfront costs associated with purchasing all of those devices individually in one year, they provide a plan over five years, which is what we're looking at, where all of those devices are maintained, provided and updated and/or upgraded, and all of the storage of the video and all of the data is maintained. And then at five years, you reevaluate whether or not you want to continue using that system, whether you want to upgrade, look at something different. But this is an, this is an ongoing expense associated with body worn cameras and the Taser weapons.
But it is an expense that we'll have to have annually, so.
Yes.
This is the first year that we've.
Correct, because when we purchased everything last year, the first year comes with purchase. So each year after that, you have, in essence, that agreement.
Yes. Okay. And then we have our weather-related contingencies that we have every year. So we're moving on. So we're now in the seventh year of our 10-year capital improvement plan, and so year eight will begin in October. So obviously, the, this year's construction, and you know what that includes. So it's the stormwater drainage, roadway reconstruction, and water distribution system. And the funding, as you can see, is listed here, capital, the capital project fund. Remember, we, we created a capital project fund in addition to the general fund and the water fund. We felt, we did this last year, we felt it would be easier to track the costs. And so out of that capital project fund, we're, we budgeted 10 million, right? Okay. And that's a combination of, well, that'd be a combination of money budgeted from the undesignated general fund, undesignated fund balance. And, and then out of the water fund, we're budgeting $2 million. Can, can you kind of go into those, those numbers a little for us?
Yeah, we're, we're taking the, the fund balance from the amount in the general fund, which is holding the actual funds. And we're transferring 10 million into the capital projects fund to fund the anticipation of actually completing the project by 9/30/2025. This is very conservative on that it's going to be completed.
Right.
But we need to anticipate that that's a possibility. And so we're transferring 10 million from the general fund into the capital projects fund to fund the, the general, the roads and the general conditions of that portion of the CIP project. And then 2 million going into the water fund to anticipation of finishing the water main. And that's anticipated roughly the balance to complete the project, starting on 10/1/2024.
Four. Yeah, so what started out to be a project to, to, to replace old water mains, you know, now includes reengineering of our roadways and, and any stormwater drainage opportunities that we have. So that's the bulk of the, the project, as it turns out, is, is the roadways and the stormwater drainage.
How do you transfer that much money with, while maintaining a $4 million balance?
Okay, so that's, that's, that's the qualifier. So we, we built this budget knowing that you guys want us to maintain a $4 million general fund balance, but that's where the financing comes in. And so we, as, if you remember, when Mark gave his three different scenarios, one of them included financing in an amount of around $7 million. And so, so we did meet with Seacoast Bank. We, we got, we, we actually met with Florida League of Cities. Their recommendation was for us to seek any kind of financing, would be to meet with the, with the bank that is our depositor, and that's Seacoast Bank. We had a meeting with them. And so, so we are providing them information. They, they want to know the scope of work for the CIP program and, and also the most recent audit. And so we're looking at perhaps just a straight loan, perhaps a line of credit. And so we anticipate having more information about that. Again, like last year, I wanted to have another item on the agenda to discuss the budget in relation to the police salaries and also this potential funding for, for the CIP program.
So you'll have that at the next meeting?
Yes. Yeah, so we'll have some, some kind of a recommendation, terms and conditions on either a, just a straight loan or perhaps, like I say, a line of credit. But this is similar to what we did last year. I do, I'll just move on to this. Can you pass this out to, to the Commission? These are the police salaries as they exist now in terms of what our starting salary is. And so we are make, as we speak, the chief and I are assessing where the police stand at this point in time with these other agencies. And we'll, what I'm proposing in this budget is an across-the-board 4% COLA increase for all of the employees, including the police. And, and then we'll make our assessment of how we, how we compare to our, to these neighboring cities and have a recommendation for you in, in August in terms of the police. That's the same thing we did last year. So I would have two items that I, that I want to bring back to you in August.
Right.
That, then, then we'll make a recommendation on for our September meeting.
Right.
From, from that.
Has federal government set their COLA?
I'm sorry?
Has the federal government set their COLA?
Well, the CPI for our area is 3.4. But if you'll see, I think part of your packet is Ms. Basil's review of towns and cities and what they're setting their rates at, and most of them are at 4%. There are some that, I mean, Manalpan's at 7, but there are some that are doing merit, yeah, merit possibilities from 3 to 5%. Do you see that?
On top of the 4%, I'm sorry? The merit or instead of?
No, no, the merit would be instead of a COLA.
Right. Okay. All right.
Yeah, so.
And the merit wouldn't compound, is that why do they?
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't let you finish. What?
Is that when they do a merit raise, is it in the salary going year to year? Or is it like a bonus? Or how does?
No, no, it's what your cost of living increase would be.
It's the same as COLA.
It's based on a, on a merit.
It's just, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's more of an evaluation. They have to be evaluated.
And so, and we've talked about this. Yeah, many times, I don't necessarily like the merit system. I do, this is a small town, 20 employees. I do an assessment of everybody on, every day of the week. I don't need to take two weeks at the end, at the start of a budget session and do some kind of a merit assessment on them. I do it every day of the week. So that's, that's why I don't propose a merit system.
Good. Okay. Can we move on?
Okay, let's see. So do you?
You're recommending 4% COLA increase across the board. We're going to have a meeting subsequent to this where we'll discuss.
Discuss the police.
Financing and the police.
Correct.
Evaluation of their salaries.
So, and I'll just say one more thing about the financing. We're doing that based on your recommendation to keep, you know, $4 million and not, well, 4 million in our general fund, fund balance. We would not need to borrow as much money if we were to use more of our fund balance, which we could do. I mean, Mark has looked at that, and it would pull us way down if we were to use more of our fund balance to finance.
How much more and what impact would that have?
The, altogether, you're talking, you're talking about the water fund and then the general fund. Say you didn't borrow anything, it would probably at the end of the project, bring the entire town to somewhere, somewhere between 2 to 3 million in reserves, which seems a little low for, if you didn't do any financing. And also, there's also other anticipated projects that, that might be going forward and even into the 26th year, that, that if we borrowed, that's where the 7 million kind of comes from. It's not just keeping the, the balance at 4 million, it's also anticipating for other projects.
Because we have projects.
That might not necessarily be budgeted for the 25th year.
Yeah, so we, we have two more sets of, of projects. Some of it is in place, Ossale, and then down on Pelican, redoing the road and drainage down on Pelican. So those are two more years of projects that.
And we have the Boynton Beach Water. Yep.
Yeah, so.
And, and this current year budget, this also includes $900,000 for the, for the partial payment of the connection.
Yeah.
Which is approximately half of what.
Right. What would, what would we do this year is around, what, the initial cost was $150,000 and then $700,000.
Right. And then the remaining $750,000 payment would be upon connection, which would be outside of this next budget year.
Right. So it does, our budget does include that money.
So what would six months operating expenses to keep in the fund balance would be approximately how much?
Three and a half.
Three and a half?
The operating for the general fund?
Just general operating cost for the town.
Like if there was a hurricane or emergency, that's what I think the fund balance is.
For the regular, regular budget, it's 6, 8?
Yeah, I mean, our, our expenses, our, our budget is around.
Yeah.
6, 8.
So 3.4 would be?
Yeah.
Six months operating. That's what I was.
Yeah, sure.
So you're only talking about 600,000?
Yeah, the, the total expenses minus the.
CIP.
CIP. I don't have a, what is that? That's.
Is that right here?
About six, so six months is about 3, 3.5 million. Yeah, to, and that's where we're kind of keeping that, that 4 million reserve around The, the town is, is financially, without any, any financing, you're, you're still going to have some reserve even after the, these, these projects, approximately 2 to 3 million. But that. But that, but like I said, the, you have anticipated projects and then you want to keep the, the fund balance in there also.
Yeah, at a certain level, I mean.
So when you borrow this money, we'll borrow it in September, October, whenever it's needed?
Yeah, we were.
We haven't determined the type of credit facility.
Yeah.
It's going to be a credit line or fixed number. We did all the background, so I think that if I'm reading between the lines here, the, we're just looking at the number.
Yeah.
Whether it's five or seven.
Correct, yeah.
And then I think I can, reading the mayor's mind here, not the footwork, and it's mouth being speak for himself, whether it's going to be a credit line, if it's a credit line, then you only need it if it's there, you pay the cost to get the credit facility.
Yeah.
You're only paying interest on what we take, if we need any, versus a, a more of a fixed facility where you've got a, you know, principal and interest payments, year over year, we got a budget for.
You, you would, you would, it's just to take a line out and you can, and borrow it as, as you're needing it.
Which might be.
At an interest only, and then, and then when it's finally done, then you convert it into a.
Right, and if the number's possibly lower, then maybe we go that route, yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay, very good.
I mean, is everybody kind of on board with that?
Yes, yeah, right, there'll be more information provided to us at the next meeting and.
Yeah.
And we can discuss it in, in some detail. All right, well, that's a thorough discussion or presentation, excuse me, of the budget. Comments about the proposed mileage rate, maintaining the same mileage rate as last year as opposed to the rollback or increased mileage rate? Your thoughts?
I like running surplus up, I like to, I like to make things where it is.
Yeah, Rob, what's your?
I agree, it's $400,000 increase, which might reduce the amount we have on a credit line at some future date as well.
Yeah, it's actually closer to 500,000.
We have some unknown costs that Mark also indicated, so I agree with it.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, we're all on a grid.
Okay, okay, so.
Okay, so then I'll be looking for a, a motion regarding the proposed mileage rate for this year, 24, 25, at 3.6724.
I make a motion to tentatively set the 2025 proposed mileage rate at 3.6724.
I second.
Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine. Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes, made a motion on certification of the rollback rate.
I make a motion to certify the 2025 rolled, rolled back rate, which is 3.4646.
Second.
Ms. Basil?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes, date of our first public hearing for the tentative budget adoption will be September 13 at 5:01, is there a motion to approve that date and time?
I'll approve that date and time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes, our second public hearing will be as a final budget adoption for this budget on Tuesday, September 24 at 5:01, is there a motion to approve that date and time?
I'll approve that date and time.
Second. Ms. Basil, say.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Mr. Dunham, let's move on now to the FDEP resilient Florida sea level rise vulnerability assessment and grant agreement. For us, Mr. Nazaro.
So I believe the manager, Mark, can provide some additional background, this is essentially a, an agreement with Baxter Woodman to perform a study that has been approved as part of the underlying grant agreement that we're also going to ratify. So this is a study, I guess, in discussions with, with staff, is to seek additional grant money for a larger project, but this, this agreement with Baxter Woodman is fully funded through a grant agreement that we've already been awarded.
Correct. Correct, this is, it's, it's kind of an economic environmental study that you need to perform to get the larger grant, which is, which from what I researched is, and can be anywhere between 500,000 and 1.5 million, depending on how much the department wants to give you. But they essentially give you a grant of approximately 90,000 to conduct this study, which Baxter Woodman would conduct, so, so that you can do the application for the larger grant.
It looks like the amount's $97,626. Has that grant already been approved?
Yes.
That money will be, will or has already been distributed to us?
It's on reimbursement basis?
Reimbursement.
Yeah, so, so we, we essentially, you fund it through paying Baxter Woodman to perform the procedures, and then we put in for reimbursement.
What's a typical lead time to get that reimbursed? Do you have any idea?
They, they usually, once you submit the reimbursement request within a month, you get reimbursed.
Okay, any questions? Sounds like a.
Win, win.
Win, win. Is there a motion to approve this grant agreement?
I'll move to approve the grant agreement.
And the agreement with Baxter Woodman.
And the agreement with Baxter Woodman for the amount of 97?
97.
The Baxter Woodman agreement is actually.
Is that right?
It's actually less than, than what the grant money is, so the agreement with Baxter Woodman is in the amount of, I believe, $95,944.
Okay, of that amount.
There you go, is there a second? Second. Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes, ordinance 24 slash 1, Mr. Nazaro, you want to?
Thank you, sir, so just going over some of the whereas clauses, the town commission created the ad hoc committee, which has been, which has had some regular meetings. In the May 14 meeting, town staff presented an item for consideration titled increased entry, excuse me, increased height for entry features applicable to all structures. Town staff explained that a six-inch increase in the entry feature heights for two-story homes would allow two-story homes to incorporate more outdoor spaces. The ad hoc committee at that time directed staff to review the issue administratively and make a recommendation to the commission, they didn't give a thumbs up or thumbs down, but they said, we understand the issue, if you want to make a recommendation to the town commission, you should do that. And they felt like it was out of their purview because that related more to, included also two-story structures, not just one story. Just as a recap, we had an increase in entry feature height for single stories in ordinance 21 slash 5 from 12 to 14 feet, which you can see some of the examples from Blue Water Cove with the 12-foot entry feature on the bottom and the 14-foot entry feature on the top. This increased, I'm sorry, this restored the previously permitted entry feature height, which was reduced via ordinance 18-3 when all discouraged items were removed from the town code. So this sort of put us back to a baseline of where we previously were. What we have now is also a sample with a 16-foot tall entry feature for single-story homes as provided with a, I think it's a Georgian-style home where the top is more proportionate and I guess consistent with the architectural style of the home. And then also I provided an example, which you can't really see very well, from Richard Jones, that is a house, a single-story house, I don't think the, the copying really came out very well, it is the, the home directly south of Paul Lyons, the, the new home on Polo that was built in a few years ago. In our review of those plans, I believe we missed the entry feature height there, and that entry feature is 16 feet. So we do have something existing on a single story that has been recently constructed that does have a 16-foot entry feature. In a note from, from the architect of the, the home that was provided to you with the, the large sheet with the two elevations, that is a home that is proposed for, for Blue Water Cove with the, the 16-foot and the 14-foot entry. They provided a, a quick note, just sort of background, they said to reduce the entry feature to 14 feet, they had to reduce the roof slope from a 5 over 12 to a 3 over 12 pitch, which is not a reflection of Georgian-style architecture. When designing the home, they said two important criteria relating to the proportions were used, one was following the golden ratio at the entry, which is the relationship between height and width, two is adopting the proportions in an appropriate manner for a Georgian-style home, reducing the entry to 14 feet per the guidelines, the ratios of height to width were no longer in conformance with the golden ratio, causing the entry to look poorly scaled in relation to the rest of the home. By maintaining the previous entry height at 16 feet, which is the one on the top, the relationship to the 12-foot tall eve height is stronger, more cohesive and appropriate to the Georgian style of the home. So this is an ordinance that's been presented largely by staff, we believe that it, it's not inconsistent with the mass considerations encouraging single-story homes, and the code was also sort of slightly, I won't, I won't call it amended, but we just sort of reinforced the fact that if you look on page two, it currently states, entry features if used should provide a sense of arrival, yet should not overpower them or the rest, remainder of the structure. The scale and proportion of the entry features should be consistent with the rest of the structure, varying just enough to write a focal point to the front of the house. So I believe that making these changes from should to shall, even though generally the intent of the code is the same, that just sort of reinforces the fact that when we are reviewing entry features at a staff level, ARPV through the town commission, they should not overpower the remainder of the structure or be too massive essentially. So that to me provides sort of some safety that there are no unintended consequences if we have an aesthetic objection to the size of an entry feature at 16 feet for a single-story or two-story home. So with that, I don't know if you have any questions or, or discussion, but that's sort of the presentation on that ordinance.
Right, do we, as part of the ad hoc committee, like I'm okay with this, these changes, I mean, they mainly pertain to one-story homes, which we're trying to encourage and a greater roof slope, but roof pitch rather, we have, where are we on, we had, we've only had one recent miss, I mean, you just read the code to us with entry features, one recent miss in the last three or four years, which address will remain nameless, but do we have, should they update what exactly the prototypes are for these entry features? Because it's pretty easy for us to look at, we have, I mean, obviously, the, an architect's supposed to make them a little different, you've got three or four different entry features here, which most people are adopting to provide more interest in a one-story home, those of Cape Dutch fenestration, the Georgian thing, are they kind of looking at that? I mean, we've, we've done a pretty, the ARPV's done a pretty good job, but we have had, every now and then we get something that once it goes up, we're like, whoa. And that would be probably more on the two-story, but I don't know where, if they even looked at that, I know they're concerned about bigger things with massing.
I mean, at this point, they're, they're looking at incentivizing single-story homes and haven't really looked at, at.
I mean, y'all do a pretty good job of it, I just don't know if we need, they need, it wouldn't take them very long, more of the staff while we're at it, and a lot of these are kind of back-ended for Blue Artic code, we did the pool setbacks, and then we're sort of doing this as well, which I, I don't necessarily disagree with.
So they are, they are looking at the street angle to the roof line, right? I forget what they call that.
That's correct, that is, it, it's building height plane, we had previously referred it to it as angle of vision, when we met with the town of Palm Beach, they corrected us, angle of vision is your horizontal view, building height plane is your vertical. So we did look at the building height plane, there was a discussion there quite thorough. The town of Palm Beach currently requires you to set back two feet from the front property line for every height of your building, we have a maximum roof height of 30 feet with, I believe, a 20 to 30-foot required setback, so that would obviously push back if you're talking about a two-story building, if we adopted something comparable to Palm Beach that pushed you really far back on the lot. Mr. Lyons is, is the chairman and some of the other members of the ad hoc committee weren't necessarily, they, they believe that number should maybe be tinkered with because requiring it to be pushed back so far on the lot may have a negative impact on, you know, the neighbors to the side or to the rear, so they're looking at really holistically. I think right now we have in the applications that I've reviewed, like a 1.6 to 1.75 building height plane ratio from, of height to, to, to front setback. So we have seen with 3,400 Polo and a lot of the other recent houses, you do have that sort of, the first story portion is, is a lot closer, and then the second story portion is set back quite a bit, so there is already some of that, you know, that built in regarding the building height plane, and just sort of maybe requiring it or codifying it, you know, way that impacts massing would be beneficial.
There's no merit to that method of, of evaluating massing, in my opinion, because it's the streetscape that we're, that everyone's addressing, that's what they're concerned about. So you take a spot on the street, angle it, depending on where the house is going to be put and its design, its shape. And, you know, hopefully they are looking at that, perhaps tinkering with what Palm Beach has already done. But I like that idea as opposed to just a flat 30-foot roof line, wherever it might be, that's how you end up getting massing, what looks fine on paper, and then when it's erected, you say, my gosh, how did we, you know, allow those? So anyways, just throw that out there that they are considering it, and we'll get a more thorough report from them on it in the fall when they return. In any event, numerically, all we're doing is increasing second story by six inches, single story by two feet, thus encouraging it, and as you can see from the drawings, at least in my opinion, it, it gives a nicer balance to the, the front entryway. If there's no disagreement on that, we're going to, first reading, correct? Ms. Basil?
An ordinance of the town commission of the town of Gulfstream, Palm Beach County, Florida, amending the town code of ordinance is at chapter 70, Gulfstream Design Manual, Article 5, Area-Wide Standards, Division 1, General Architectural Standards, Section 70100, Roof and Eve Heights to Adjust Criteria Applicable to Entry Feature Heights for One and Two-Story Homes, Providing, For Codification, Providing an Effective Date, This First Reading Today, July 12, 2024.
Ordinance 24 slash 1 has been brought to us on first reading, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve ordinance 24 slash 1.
Second, Ms. Basil?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Any comments from the commission? If not, we bet you out of here by 10:15.